Yep. I'm good.
What time is it? Oh, my voice isn't off. Hi, Emery.
So I have to change the numbers they've given me? That's right, I have until Friday to change.
I think so. We decided it's going to be the nurse practitioner's office. I'm like here. The offices.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay.
Hello, this is Eric Boer. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Is it just you and I on the call?
No, there are many, many people on the call, over 31.
Okay, hello, everybody.
Thank you for letting my work.
Hi, everybody. Hi Lynn. Hi Murphy, nice to see you.
Nice to see all of you too. Thank you.
Murphy, you're muted.
Whoever has a little kid in their nose, could you please mute your phone or speaker? Thanks. It's nice to hear the little kids, though. We'll get started in a second. It's almost seven o'clock. Okay, um, this is Lynn Ide. I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. If you are not muted, please do so out of courtesy for everybody else. And if you do not know how to do that, just ask us. Um, so for example, Ilda, you need to mute yourself. I can see you. And.
Sorry, my screen, my main screen was muted, so I didn't hear you, but now I apologize. I'll mute.
It's okay.
What did you say for us to ask you to do what?
I just asked everybody who has not muted themselves to mute themselves unless they are speaking, because the background noise makes it hard for people to hear. And if you don't know how to do that, please speak up and we can walk you through it.
I don't know if you're.
Okay, um, well, welcome, everybody, um, to the July. Have, you know, some big items on the agenda today. Could people please mute themselves unless they're going to speak? And the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? You just need to identify yourself, your name, and, um, and then you have your three minutes.
Excuse me, Ms. I, can we do a roll call of board members so that I make sure everyone, I get everybody?
Okay, sure, go right ahead. Janet, are you gonna do the, are you gonna call the names?
I can.
Okay.
Ms., Dr. Caban Owen.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
She's here. She raised her hand.
Ms. Ide.
Here.
I'm here.
Dr. Galucci.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Eeny.
Here.
Mark Doyle is here.
Dr. Gomez. No. Mr. Doyle.
I see you.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't ask, is Lisa Dunne here?
Sorry, Ms. Dunne, mister.
So, thank you, Janet. Um, so the first order of business is public comment. And is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Murphy, go ahead.
Okay, I sent everybody an email, but I sent it like 15 minutes ago. So most of you haven't had a chance to, the Board of Ed members haven't had a chance to look at it. But the bottom line is, it's a graph of Wyndham Willametteck's COVID-19 new cases for the last 30 days. I've been tracking this since the end of March. Uh, and I know you all are looking at the question of what to do at schools in the fall. And, um, we're not Texas, or California, or Florida, or Arizona. We're quite different, and that might make a real difference in what we decide to do. So if you haven't looked at, I mean, we all see the horrible data from those other states on TV every night, but we don't, they don't really show us what we're doing in Connecticut, and particularly around here. Statewide, there are only 66 people hospitalized all over the state. The number of new cases in Wyndham and Willametteck have been zero to two since July 7th, except on July 15th, when there were three. I have data on the five-day moving average since the end of March, and it's been less than three since June 14th, and less than two since July 5th. And unless, there have been 11 COVID-related deaths in Willametteck since January. Most recent was reported over the last weekend. The one before that was nearly two months ago. Eight of the 11 deaths in town occurred in one of the town's nursing homes early on, and that situation appears to have been brought under control, because they not only had no new deaths, they only had one new case, and that was among a staff member a week before last, I think. Uh, so as a town, relative to even Western Connecticut, and certainly the country out West, we're doing quite well. I've been in practically weekly contact with a family in Norway for nearly 60 years. And of course, they're, they're my age, and they have grandchildren. And so I've been following the progress of COVID-19 and what they're doing about schools in Oslo almost as closely as here. Their children are back in preschool and elementary school, and it's going quite well. We could actually learn something from their experience, probably. The latest data that I've seen says that adolescents transfer the virus about the same adults do, but that children under 12 appear to transfer the virus less than adults do. And a number of towns in the country have adopted sending the elementary students back to school and keeping the middle and high school students on virtual, and using the middle school and high school as a way of expanding the classroom students so that they can social distance more widely than they would be in creed buildings alone. I, I have not followed closely what you all have been doing. I don't know how much of that you've already thought of, but I just thought I'd throw it out there to inform your conversation tonight and make sure that you had data on what's going on locally. Thank you very much.
Murphy, Kelly, are you planning on speaking? Or could you please mute your phone or your computer? Thank you. Is there somebody else who would like to speak during public comment?
Kristen, we can't hear you.
Who's speaking up?
Ms. Gooden would like to speak.
Yeah, Ms. Gooden's trying to speak, but.
You're on mute. You're not, your, your speaker may not be on. I'm not sure. I can't hear you. Do you want to speak? We can't hear you. We can see your lips moving. Okay, we can move on to somebody else, and then maybe you can figure it out, okay? And then we'll come back to you. Is there somebody else who would like to speak? Okay. Nobody else? Okay, well, hearing nobody else, we will move on to the next items on the agenda. There are 70 people on the, on the meeting tonight. I just want to give one more chance for public comment before we launch into our discussion and action items today. Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna move on. The next item on the agenda is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes for June 24th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion. Katina, is that you making an emotion? Okay.
Second that.
Second by Ilda. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes? Okay, we're gonna take a vote. Janet Testa's gonna do a roll call on the vote.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Ide.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there anybody we missed? Got everybody? Okay, uh, the meeting minutes were adopted, and, um, uh, before we go too much further along, I'll entertain a motion from the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee to add an agenda item to under action items this evening. Mark, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, yeah, I would like to make a motion that we add. See, let me just find it here for a second. That we add the discussion of the year-end closure. The rec, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we take action on the recommendation of what to do with the year-end closure money for budget year 19, 1920.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Paula. All, now we need to take a vote on the motion to add that action item to the agenda. It's, it's from the Finance and Audit Committee meeting earlier today. So, Janet, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Ide.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle. Thank you.
Um, folks, it's come up in the chat that Kristen Gooden, who had tried to speak during public comment, is now able to do so. Would you allow me to divert from the normal agenda and let her have her three minutes worth? Just put your thumbs up if it's okay, board members. Okay, um, so before we move on to the superintendent's reports, we're gonna just let Kristen Gooden speak. Where is she?
We can't hear you, Kristen.
Oh, that's unfortunate.
Her audio must not be working.
Connecting to audio. She's connecting to audio. Are you on now? Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Go right ahead, Kristen.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. My sincere apologies. Um, I'm Kristen Gooden. I'm the school nurse at Wyndham Elementary. Um, I know the board will be voting tonight on a new medical advisor, and I'm looking forward to meeting with him this school year, as we all are. But I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Kelly, who has been our medical advisor for many years and is always very accessible to our nursing group and school community. We wish him the very best in his retirement.
Thank you. That's very nice. He was all three of my children's pediatrician, so yes, I agree with you. He's a great guy.
Am I too?
And a bunch of other people are saying yes to that, too. Um, okay, so we're, you're on. Dr. Youngberg, your superintendent's reports are.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. Um, I have a few awards and recognitions I want to go over with you all. I know most of the people are probably on the call for other agenda items, but it's always good to celebrate the good news in our district. We have a few, as you noticed in your board packet. Students at Wyndham Center School are being celebrated for being promoted from grade five. I actually want to celebrate all of our fifth-grade students who were promoted about a month ago and are probably anxiously awaiting what's going to happen in the fall when they go on to sixth grade. It's a big deal to go between fifth and sixth grade. So I want to just celebrate the students that are listed who received President's Awards for Educational Excellence and Educational Achievement, and as well as a Distance Learning Award, celebrating all the students listed on your, in your board packet there. Also want to shout out to that Wyndham High School. Students who received scholarships in the amount of $1,000. I'm sorry, there's an echo out in Janet's office, and I can hear myself talking, and so it's, it's distracting me. I'm sorry about that. So Jocelyn Castro, Barbara Rosales, Ainsley Dupuy, and Nicole Peralta all received a $1,000 scholarship, so congratulations to them. Also want to extend our appreciation to the before and after-school coordinators who continue to support their families even during schooling at home. The coordinators created quarantine kits, 215 bags worth for the students at five elementary schools and for Wyndham middle school students. In the quarantine kits were a whole lot of different items, antibacterial soap, face masks, pencils, notebooks, et cetera. And we celebrate them for being generous and taking care of our kiddos. And also a special thanks to Lori Bergstrom of the Juvenile Review Board for also giving out some goodie bags to our students during our grab-and-go lunch program. So as always, we're grateful for anyone who's helping to take care of the kiddos in Wyndham. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Youngberg from the board on, on those items? No, and despite all the, you said at the beginning, despite all the other things that are going on, it's always good to take time to recognize these good things that are happening. Thank you. Um, so next item on the agenda are committee reports, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mark Doyle for the Finance and Audit Committee report.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Well, the first thing we discussed and we read as an actual item to the agenda was the closeout of the 1920 school year. It looks like through careful budgeting and close watching from the staff, as well as some good bounces from maybe the COVID, that we're gonna end up with about a $600,000 surplus, if you will, from, uh, for the year 19 budget, year 19 and 20. We recommend, mention that, that money be put into health, health insurance reserve, because that primarily is where a lot of the savings came from. People who have surgeries, all the electric procedures that they couldn't have taken place during the COVID, well, now we know we're gonna start coming. But we saved some money for that, so we figured the agreement was to put it in the health fund for a potential spike come next year in that, in that health fund account. The other thing we talked about is a transfer of monies. We look primarily in the salaries accounts, and the overall transfer is 1.1 million. But it's all within the salary line. It's not, there's no extra money. There's no loss. We're just adjusting the budget so that we, as may have estimated, without really going back through and saying it actually cost us 13,000 or actually cost us 50,000. What Rita's done is gone through and put down what we actually spent in the individual account lines. So overall, it'll be a 1.1 million transfer, but it's all within the, the salary lines. It's not taking anything from anywhere else. It's just correcting, if you will, or tuning up the budget. The other thing we did is we reviewed the borough school budget report that is produced by EastCon, and that, again, Rita's looked at. Apparently, they'll be rolling over about $100,000.
I think it froze up.
Of income from last year into the help officer cost within the borough system for, again, COVID or any other expenses that was there. The final thing we did was to make a general discussion about the, the upcoming budget, and recommendation is that we won't expect any real month-to-date budget report from Rita's office because of all the ongoing transfers and reconciliations and getting rid of the various encumbrances. So we'll look at our next year-to-date budget report coming out of her office for September, and I believe is pretty much what we talked about.
Okay, is, are there any, that's a pretty thorough report. There are a couple people who are not muted. Lisa and Kathy, please mute yourselves to avoid background noise. Does anybody have any questions for Mark? Okay, um, who's 8602083108? If you, if you aren't a board member or aren't speaking, would you please mute yourself? Thank you, whoever that is. Um, okay, so we'll be talking more about those, a couple of those things under the action part of the agenda. School planning and design. Tracy Lambert, you're on.
So we haven't had a meeting, um, because the building and grounds people are just getting busy cleaning and setting things up and stuff like that. There's some construction going on and some bids that are currently out, and I'm thrilled to be able to announce that we have a wells committee. I mean, not a wells committee, a oil tank committee and a roof committee for North Wyndham. Tar Kramer, Chuck Penny, and our very own, Tar Kramer's our own too, but our very own Mr. Camacho, Robinson Camacho, are the three members on those committees, and they're all excited to get started on work very soon. So I'm hoping that gets moving, and I'm sure that Dawn Tomacos hopes that gets moving very soon as well. So we are excited. We will be having a August meeting, but probably mid-August instead of early August. So I will be planning that out soon. That way, when September comes, we know exactly what's going on. So I will be planning that out soon. That way, when September comes, we know exactly what's going on. Dawn is finding out things about school opening and cleaning and what she's allowed to use and what she's not allowed to use and stuff like that. They've been busy with that, so I haven't kind of bothered her and let them do their thing to get ready for the opening of school, because making sure everything's safe is my priority right now.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there any questions from board members or comments on that report? Okay, well, thank you. And then we have Policy Committee. Is there a report from the Policy Committee this evening?
Hello, everyone. The report is that we met last month, and I think it was before the meeting. So we had the report from our last meeting last month. So our next meeting will be next Thursday at 4 o'clock. And we've been busy. We've had several, of course, tonight on our action items, so that's about it. I just sent out a notice for requesting the meeting to be 4 o'clock next Thursday. So hopefully that works for everyone who is on the Policy Committee and who will be attending. That's it. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from board members on that report?
It's 4 o'clock. Good? Yes, no?
As long as the committee members can be there, that's the most important thing, and then other folks can come in anytime that, you know, if they want to, other board members and members of the public.
Yes. Janet will be sending out a request.
Okay.
Thank you, Janet.
Great.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, Executive Committee has not met since our last meeting. We will be having a meeting sometime before our next Board of Ed meeting. The major, there's been a lot of work going on, but it's really all board work related to preparing for next year, closing up the budget, things of that sort. The Executive Committee is going to be proposing to the full board a process for Dr. Youngberg's performance assessment and a calendar for that. You know, what the tool is going to look like and how we're going to be doing that over the course of the year. Of course, we're working directly with Tracy Youngberg on that. Nothing's being done, you know, behind closed doors on that, and we will be bringing that to you all for discussion. Any questions on that? Okay, I just want to take a little time right here under Executive Committee report, even though, well, as the Chair of the Board, I'm going to report to you all, and some of you have been getting some of these communications and some of you have only, well, and some of them have come just directly to me. But we've gotten about, I just counted it up, about 15 either letters that have been mailed directly to me at my house or emails that some of you have also been CC'd on from parents at St. Mary's St. Joe's School, inquiring as to whether or not, since the school is closing down, the Board of Ed in Wyndham would pay for transportation for their children to go to the Catholic school in Baltic. We have looked into that, and we do not have a legal obligation to provide for that transportation. And given the tightness of our budget this year, I think it would be, we would be hard-pressed to be generous enough to say that we're going to take money away from other things that we need to be spending money on. So we have crafted a response to the parents, and I will be sending that out. I was not planning on having action or discussion on it this evening, but I did want to inform you and say publicly that, you know, it's a very sad situation for the parents and families at St. Mary's St. Joe's. I know how hard it is to have your child have to have a transition that you weren't planning on. And I can also say, as somebody who went to 12, 10 different school systems when I was growing up because of moving, that children are much more resilient than sometimes people think they are. And we would welcome them with open arms into the Wyndham Public School System and do our very best to make them all feel comfortable. And we have already reached out and indicated that. But I do think it's fair that we give the parents a decisive answer so that they can go ahead and decide to plan the way they need to plan for their children and their families in the coming school year. We could add a discussion item to the agenda if people would like to do so. Otherwise, I'm going to leave it at that. But speak up now if you would prefer to add an item to the agenda. Katina, we're not discussing it now.
Not to add an item, but to request that the letter is also sent in Spanish. I happen to have an email today that I received at my board email from a Spanish-speaking parent.
Okay.
If that can be, please translate it. Thank you.
I might need to solicit your help on that.
Absolutely.
We can help too.
Okay, I just don't want to overburden the staff right now, so. Anything else on that? Okay, and we will be setting a date for our retreat later on, so. Okay, so we're on to discussion items. And the first item up for discussion is the Board Retreat. At our last meeting, we decided we were going to have a fall retreat, but rather than have it in early September, as it was originally on the calendar, we will work, I will work with the superintendent and the staff between now and our August board meeting to suggest a date for September board meeting slash meetings, if we need to. And also, we'll come up with some thoughts on a proposed date for the retreat. We talked about, excuse me, waiting until October. So we get, we can give ourselves some time for the school year, excuse me, whatever form that's going to take to get started. So at the last meeting, some possible topics that were put forward were to have much more time to unpack the idea of consolidation in the elementary schools and, you know, to weigh the data, I mean, to look at data, to look at a number of things and have a deeper discussion about that topic. We had also talked about having a discussion about our dual-language programs and sort of how all those pieces fit together and what are plans moving forward. And another topic that was brought up at the last meeting was the Wyndham High School pathway transition process. And I just want to put it out to board members and to the superintendent. Are there any other items that, or any reaction to the items that have already been put out? No?
They were the ones we talked about already, so they work for us, absolutely.
Okay, so I think what will happen from here is that Dr. Youngberg and I, and then when we have our Executive Committee meeting in August, we'll start talking about the shape of that agenda and then bring it to you all. But at this point, we're talking about starting on a Friday and then spending time on a Saturday also. So take a look at your calendars and please let me know as soon as you can if there are definite Fridays and Saturdays in October that are off the books for you for one reason or another. Okay, um, okay, so we got some consensus on that. That's good. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Youngberg to get us started on the big topic that's on the agenda tonight. And I will just say that we got a letter from the board, from the teachers' union late this afternoon about their concerns about this issue. And anybody who's been following the news know that the two big teachers' unions in the state are really concerned about a lot of things around reopening. And I just want to say that I know people are probably on this meeting to hear what our discussion is on that. I would ask you, Dr. Youngberg, when we get started, before you get started on walking us through what you presented to us regarding the reopening plans, to give us a sense of what our options are as a local board and how constrained or not we are by what the state, the governor and the State Department of Education and public health officials are saying, because I think there's some misinformation out there about how much latitude we as a board have to make the decision.
Thanks, Lynn.
What our options are.
You're absolutely correct. So one of the things I want to make sure everybody on the call understands is this, the decision to reopen schools in person is a state decision. It's been made by the governor in collaboration with the Commissioner of Education. Superintendents or boards of education do not have the power to make a decision that goes against that decision. We can't change what the governor and the Commissioner of Education have given as a directive. We can just do what they've asked us to do, which is what I'm going to present tonight, and that is to develop a plan that meets the guidelines they've established for us. But it's not like a snow day or an inclement weather early dismissal where I have the power to make the decision. I do not have power to undo this decision, nor does the Board of Ed. So there's no, Lynn, you and I talked about whether or not, you know, there would be an official vote on this plan, but we ended up not putting it on as a vote, because the reality is the plan has to be submitted, whether you agree with it or not. I certainly want your feedback, and I want to hear when I present the plan, places where I could make it better. And I know what the concerns are. I also received the letter from the WFT, and I've obviously read thousands of comments in our parent and staff survey. So I know, I understand the anxiety. I would be lying to you if I didn't tell you I had it myself. I mean, you know, the whole trying to keep people safe is weighing pretty heavily on me. I think that you have to recognize that the decision to send your child or children back to school in person or to return to work in person is a deeply personal decision. I can't make it for anyone. I have my own kids to make that decision for. What I can tell you is I'm working really hard with the leadership team to make sure that our plans are aligned to the guidelines to the very best of our ability. It's a difficult decision. We're trying to go back to school in a pandemic. So what we've done is we've taken, you haven't.
Could I just stop you here, Tracy? Just quickly, I want to interject, I want to, I just want to interject as the Chair of the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed does have the latitude to advocate on behalf of our board with the state, right, about any concerns that we have. So like even if we could not vote to go against what the governor and the state is telling us our options are, we could certainly join in any advocacy efforts to ask for something in particular, whatever. So I just want to put that out there. I don't want, I don't want people to feel like there is nothing that we could do. That's all.
That's correct. I just was trying to say that we can't undo a decision that's been made by the governor. We're not, we don't have the power to do that. This document, if you haven't read the document from the State Department of Ed yet, it's on our website. It's on the State Department of Ed's website. It is more than 50 pages with multiple links to all sorts of sources, educational, health and safety sources, facility sources. This document is what all the superintendents across the state have been given and told that they need to develop a plan that's aligned to this document. So we have been working as a leadership team since we received the plan on June 29th to make that happen. So what I'm going to present to you tonight are the decisions we've made in accordance with aligning our efforts to what the state has given us. And I want to just let you know that the directive, which was reiterated in another email yesterday from the Commissioner of Ed, the directive to the school systems right now is to come with three plans. The first plan is the one where he's telling us, the governor is telling everyone across the state, we're opening in person, which has people, some people very anxious. That plan is supposed to be a reopening in person that's available to 100% of our students. Every student, if their parents choose to send them, should be able to come back to school. The second model that they want to see is a hybrid, and that's a model where 50% of the students are on campus and 50% are accessing digital learning from home, and they rotate through. And third is the event that there's something that happens. I just got a message that my speaker is not working. Do you want to stay on me? You can? Okay, sorry, it just popped up. The third model is in the event that there is a breakout, you know, an increase in COVID cases. The third is to go back to 100% virtual learning for everyone. So right now, the plan that I'm going to go through is talking about the details that would have to happen if we bring people back in person. So that's what I'm going to share with you. I'm going to try to share my screen right now. All right, so this is the executive summary of the school reopening plan. The full plan is a larger document, but again, it's all aligned to the State Department of Education's Adapt, Advance, and Achieve document. So as I mentioned, our very first objective is to make sure we meet the guiding principles of the State Department of Education's plan, and health and safety of our students and staff is our very first priority. After health and safety of our students and staff, I can tell you, I've talked to my leaders, and I plan to talk to the staff when they return. The next, the next priority for us is social emotional well-being of students and staff. And then once we take care of the health and safety and the social emotional well-being, we will get to academics. In that order, that is our plan. These are the guiding principles. And again, I referenced the plan. I encourage you all to read the state's plan, so you'll see that I have, we have worked to align our efforts to the state's plan. Back in May, we opened, we started a reopening committee, and we focused on four key areas, physical health and safety, the physical environment or our facilities, keeping them clean, social emotional well-being and teaching and learning. And all four of these categories obviously have operations and communications impact. So this is sort of our little circle to show you all the things that have been happening, that we've been talking about with all of our leaders throughout the summer. The leadership, the reopening committee, many members on that committee attended a professional development that helped us think about how to potentially solve some of the problems that reopening under these guidelines might put forth to us. All right, staff and student expectations when we are in person. This visual actually comes right off the state plan. We are planning to social distance and cohort, and cohorting is this idea that you keep groups of students together. They become like a family, and they're, you know, they stay together as a way to increase safety. We're obviously going to push the whole idea of hand washing and the use of hand sanitizer. Everyone must wear a mask, and the mask must cover your nose and mouth. These are all mitigating factors that the health and safety experts say are going to reduce the likelihood of an outbreak. Obviously, we want our kids.
Excuse me, Tracy. I just want to ask a bunch of people who are not muted to mute themselves, because there is a little feedback. The people that I can see that are not muted are Kelly, somebody who is K E S, somebody who is Annette, 8605763329, 8602686384, and Whitney. When Whitney comes online, needs to make sure they're muted. Please do so. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so again, all of these are mitigating factors that we would like, not we would like, we are going to ensure are in place in our schools when we open in person. We have a protocol for enhanced cleaning and disinfection. We're going to make sure our kids continue to cough into their elbows and, you know, not spread things all over the air. We are working to minimize the sharing of materials, which is not an easy thing to do, particularly in our elementary schools. And we have some protocols for making sure that students and staff members think about how they're feeling before they come to work. Because if they don't come to work or school when they're not feeling well, again, we might be in a better, better shape as a, as a community. Because if they don't come to work or school when they're not feeling well, again, we might be in a better, better shape as a as a community in terms of our health. Again, this visual came right off the State Department of Ed's report. This screen again reiterates the fact that all students, staff, and visitors are required to wear a mask or some kind of suitable face covering. The only time you'd be exempt from wearing a mask is if you can provide medical documentation as it lists on the screen, or if you're physically unable to wear the mask or take it off without assistance. So we'll be working on, or we've already started having the discussions about how we're going to go about getting this medical documentation and ensuring that everyone in the community is safe. We we are in the process of purchasing face shields and or desk shields for the students and staff members that can't wear masks. Although the Department of Public Health doesn't have a whole lot of confidence in those items, they they do have some kind of value in terms of keeping people safe and and stopping particles from getting on other people. So we are going to make the investment in getting some of those. Students will be able to have breaks from their masks. They obviously can't eat in their masks. And teachers are able to provide instruction without a mask. And again, they will have, we're Neil and I were working this morning to try to figure out how many we needed to order. Because we're imagining that if we can establish social distancing in some of our rooms, makes that very difficult for the teacher to be so many feet away from the students that a face shield, a clear face shield could be used when they take their masks off to actually instruct. Again, school's going to look very different than it looked than it has looked in the past, but that's part of what we have to do and have to get used to to make sure everybody's safe. These are actually the CDC guidelines, symptoms that they say if you're right now, if you're experiencing them, they could be COVID. Obviously, they're all the symptoms that I think, you know, if you've ever not felt well, someone has had one of these symptoms. So having a symptom doesn't mean you have COVID. But we want people to be cognizant of how they're feeling. And we want students, you know, parents to be cognizant of how their kids are doing before they come to school. We want our staff members to be thinking about it all. So I also want to point out that almost every single day, and in some cases, multiple times a day, we're getting new information. So this presentation was done two days ago. There could already be, and there's actually a couple of places where in new information has already been put out that I would have to go back and change. So it's it is really day to day. For example, the CDC might come out next week and tell us, hey, listen, we've done another study and we can eliminate certain symptoms from your list of possible symptoms. Right now, this is what was on their website as of what was it, Monday afternoon, Monday morning when I sent this to you. This next, this next slide shows that there's three methods that the CDC uses to determine when you can return to work. The school district has not actually chosen which method it's going to use to make that determination. We'll make that decision with the Department of Public Health in collaboration with the State Department of Ed. But one of these methods will be used to determine how long a staff member or a student should stay out if they've been ill. And again, that's more information that could be changing every day. Each of our schools, according to the state's plan, needs to have an isolation room in the event a student has COVID-19 symptoms during the school day. This is a room separate from the nurse's office. It needs to obviously have proper ventilation. It needs to have an assigned restroom. It needs to have an exterior door. The goal is to isolate a student who may potentially have COVID. So nobody else gets COVID if that's the case. So there's a series of protocols we have to follow. Each of our schools has identified an isolation room and a restroom associated with that room, and if, and we're working on phone extensions and taking care of all that. But every school will have an isolation room and a protocol for dismissing students who are, who could be placed in the room. This next statement comes from Patrice Solik, who I speak to a few times a week. She is the Director of Health for the North Central District Health Department. We are part of that particular health department. You know, the state has a, has an overarching health department, and then there's many different regions. So this is our region. I actually asked for details of what I needed to put in my plan in terms of how we know what we do, who who quarantines if there is a case or a suspect, suspected case in your buildings, who quarantines for how long. They don't actually have all the details of that worked out yet, but this, we will know, we'll be making those decisions in conjunction with the Department of Public Health both at the local and state level, once the reporting of a potential case is is completed. In terms of the the state document, there's a variety of protocols or regulations that we have to meet in terms of ventilation. One of the things I know is going to be a big change for many of our classrooms is that we're no longer allowed to use standalone fans unless they're used for as an exhaust, which means many of our classrooms, I think, are going to be very, very warm, particularly at the beginning of the school year. So I did make a note of that. I anticipate having to call early dismissals because some of those classroom temperatures are they're just not, they're not bearable. Without fans moving air, it could be an issue. So I want to make the board aware of that, and and I know parents and staff members are going to be aware of that. Also, I want to point out that if it does, if the heat in the classrooms does get excessive, everyone's wearing masks which only makes that whole how you're feeling worse. So I'm keenly aware of all this. And and I, again, I'm just going to reiterate, school is going to look very different than it has in the past, but we're doing the best we can to meet the safety protocols outlined in the state's plan. There's a series of things we have to do in terms of cleaning and and with the right products and in the right way. And Dawn Tamakis and her team has been doing a really good job of of helping us with that. We have to have a series of protocols for the using the bathrooms. For example, they want to know with this whole idea of cohorting and being able to identify where everyone's been, they want certain classrooms to use certain bathrooms in the event of a breakout. They know where we need to go and what we need to close down and what we need to disinfect. They want to eliminate anything that's going to push germs out into the air. So all the electrical hand dryers are being removed. And we're working on some touch-free paper towel dispensers. We're going to have garbage cans without lids, so we don't have to touch things when you're throwing the paper towels away. All the things that you can imagine, trying to stop something that we can't see from passing around in the air. That's really what it comes down to. So we're working on trying to make sure there's a safe learning and working environment for everyone. In terms of our classrooms and school safety, again, going to look very different. All of the principals, and I know many of them are on this call, have been thinking deeply about their schedules and just planning school in general. Our pre-K to eight students, the whole process is designed around this idea of cohorting, keeping students together. We're going to minimize their movement and keep them together in like little pods, little families. The guidelines from the state suggest six feet social distancing, shoulder to shoulder, where feasible. We're having a tough time getting to the six foot mark. We're probably closer to four feet. And in some, in some cases, we can meet six feet, but the reality is to meet six feet in many of our buildings would require us to, not only to hire a large number of additional staff members, but we don't have places to put them. So for example, if you had 25 kids in a class and you decide you want to split that class in half so that you could achieve the social distancing six feet or greater, you would then need another classroom to put that group of kids in and another teacher to watch that group of kids. So you can imagine across the district how that might look. I asked the principals to start thinking about that. And like, I'm looking right now, all the principals created their own schools plan, just like I, the district plan is the overarching umbrella, and each school has their own plan. So I'm looking at the middle schools plan right now, and Dr. Ware did an analysis where he tried to figure out what it would take to actually get to the six foot just the six foot social distancing. And he believes that he would have approximately 193 students that would need to be moved to other classrooms, and everyone knows what our middle school's like in terms of additional space. There isn't any. And he also believes we need about another 13 staff members. So we know where we are budget-wise. It's it's not something that's going to happen. So we've we've done the very best we can to move the desks away from each other, similar to the picture you see there. And because the guidelines say six feet where feasible, we feel like we've met the guidelines to the very best of our ability. All the desks are going to be forward facing. Again, this is about keeping the, you know, the air particles and whatever the virus is traveling on. So it doesn't end up in someone's face. That's the goal. We we again are going to focus on students not sharing materials, not sharing supplies. Again, not easy, particularly at the elementary level. Things like classroom libraries where they go and choose books is going to look very different next year. Here's someone talking.
Rafael, please mute. Rafael, can you please mute? Thanks.
All of the hallways are going to have one-way traffic flows, just like the way you drive your car on a road. There'll actually is going to be a tape line down the center so that students know one way from the other. There's going to be signage in all of the buildings around the traffic flow and health and safety expectations. Signs will be in English and Spanish as well as non-verbal cues. We are obviously not allowed to have large gatherings within the building. Currently, the governor's order says 25 people indoors. I think it's supposed to become 50, but obviously, in a school setting, 25 or 50 doesn't give us a whole lot of options for bringing people together. Recession will still take place for our pre-K to five students, but playground equipment will be off limits at the start of the school year. Some people, some districts are looking at potentially opening up the playground equipment, but what has to happen if you do that is you need a cleaning protocol between each group of students or potentially each student that uses it. And we don't have the ability to do that yet, just yet. So we're, we're starting off the school year with the playground equipment off limits. All right, this is the, what I mentioned earlier when I started, the three, the three models that the State Department of Ed has requested, the on-campus learning, in-person, available to 100% of our students, the hybrid model, and the remote learning model. So we have it in green, yellow, red, because obviously, the decisions to move back and forth between these models has to do with the COVID cases. Right now, the the governor and the State Department of Ed are saying we're in green. We should be able to open up our doors to 100% of our students, assuming they choose to come to on-campus learning. One of the things that the Commissioner has made clear, though, because we've all done surveys in a variety, in in a variety of ways, and we know that not all parents are going to send their kids to school. We know that for a fact. The Commissioner wants a virtual learning option available to anyone who opts out. So essentially, Wyndham and all the other schools across the state are working to open up two schools simultaneously, the in-person school and the online school. So this is just more information specific to in-person learning. Again, the cohort model and how they're going to be co-horted. Cohorting is actually not required in the high school because they know how difficult it is, but they want us to be aware of obviously, social distancing. And and we're going to work really hard to keep our lunch cohorts at the high school together. But high school schedules are very different than elementary or middle school schedules, so it's much more difficult. We have some information on the screen about the fact that we're going to try to minimize pullouts and maximize push-ins supports. And if we are, if we do have to pull students out because we know that is possible, that we're going to have cohorting in mind when we make those decisions. Many of our art and music teachers are going to rotate through classrooms in most buildings. We are starting off the school year with no indoor in-person singing, so don't choir a chorus, no woodwind or brass instruments. We're encouraging virtual learning for those particular things. And that again has to do with the sending, you know, the virus out so people can get sick. So we're trying to minimize anything like that. And that again is identified in the guidelines. Physical education classes will be outdoors whenever possible. And when they are indoors, again, they have to, they have to meet the social distancing standards and minimize the sharing of materials. If you are a student who chooses not to come back to campus at the start of the school year, you will have access to online instruction. We're still trying to work out all the details on that. Part of it right now is the unknown in that we don't know exactly who's coming in person and who's coming, who's not. So there'll be a slide coming up in the presentation where we're actually going to ask parents to make a commitment to us a couple of weeks before school starts, because we do have to be able to plan and understand how many kids, at least a ballpark of how many kids are coming. And we're going to ask parents to understand that if they change their mind, and that's going to happen, right, this, this is a very unusual circumstance, that they give the school some notice to make that change, because we are going to need to make adjustments to to furniture, to to different things that are happening. We can't just have kids coming and going all the time and still meet the safety standards. So more to come on that once we have some idea of what we're starting off with. In the hybrid model, we're working really hard on our end to fix the schooling at home, or I should say, improve schooling at home, because it did work in some cases very well. But the hybrid model is going to have an A day and a B day, and I'll just show you the next screen, which will rotate through. So if you're in Group A, you would come to campus on Monday and Wednesday and have a flex Friday. And if you're in Group B, you would come to campus on Tuesday and Thursday and have a flex Friday. And on the days that you're not on campus, you're receiving digital supports online. So this hybrid model, each school will have the opportunity to identify who their 50% is. Some schools are going to use grade levels to make the the cut. K to two will come on Mondays and Wednesdays. Grades three to five will come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But the high school, for example, if they were to use grade levels to make the decision, they would, they would not have a 50-50 cut or or they would not have the opportunity to offer the classes that they want to offer. So they're going to look at their they're going to look at their 50-50 split, I believe, based on alphabetical. So again, we're opening up to two schools at one time. And we're looking to ensure schooling at home is more like an actual school day provided virtually. So that's going to be a big push for professional development when we start the school year. Any questions so far?
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I have a ton, but until the end, Trace.
Okay, sounds good.
Ilda raised her hand. Ilda, you have a question now?
Yes, my question is, before I forget, about the mask. I I understand some people, you know, they can't wear masks for long periods of time. So what will they do when they can't wear the masks?
So they have to wear the masks unless they provide medical documentation that they can't. We're going to provide breaks and work to get the kids outside, get the staff members breaks. I mean, we're going to do the very best we can. I know what you're saying. I I've been outside in the, in the heat with one on. It's it's not fun. We're going to have to work it out. It's one of the requirements to open up.
Okay. Any other board members have a question at this point? Katina?
When, when is the final decision going to be made by the the government?
So we're not exactly clear about that. We've heard sometime in early August. I'm not exactly sure. We haven't been given a definitive date that says on this day they're going to make the decision. We've just been told Friday, this plan has to be submitted to the State Department of Ed with the three models.
I can't see all the board members because we're screen sharing. So if there's a board member who would like to ask a question now, please speak up.
I have a question, Lynn.
Go ahead, Paula.
This is Paula. A couple of questions. Have we thought about taking temperatures? Is that in our plan at all?
The temperature is not actually in the state guidelines because the Health Department has decided it's not a a viable way to decide if someone is, so it's not part of our plan. We can encourage staff members and parents to, you know, check on those symptoms before they come to school or work, but we're not going to be taking temperatures in the buildings.
Okay, the other question is, there was some those who have been out because of symptoms coming back after three days without fever. Is there a caveat that indicates that those three days have to be without any kind of anti-inflammatory or Tylenol-type medication?
So I know, actually, after I created the slide, I know I got another email from Tara Webb, our head nurse, who actually said that there's some changes to the protocols. Like I said, they change literally every day. And I do know that we're going to have a very specific protocol for when kids can return, but it's not in this presentation. I apologize. I can give you the update, but it will be in the state plan.
Okay, and the only other question I have, has the idea of half sessions ever been considered?
What do you mean, half sessions?
Instead of if we have social distancing, which means there's a certain number of students that cannot be accommodated in a classroom, and we don't have the room having two sessions a day.
So we were told we have to open up school as normal as possible, and we have to still meet the instructional hours. I'm making, I'm making some recommendations to reduce the school day slightly, which we'll talk about shortly. But we have to maintain the instructional hours requirement, which doesn't allow us to split the day. But but Paula, you're you're not wrong in that a lot of state, a lot of school systems across the state have been saying they would like the governor to move to the hybrid model, because the hybrid model naturally reduces the capacity in schools. Right? If you only have half your kids on campus at a time, you have the ability to potentially fully social distance and manage some of the other safety protocols. But right now, the directive for schools is to open up full in-person school available to 100% of the students and still meeting 177 school days, because they gave us three back, and the instructional hours, the 900 hours is still all there. So we're not, it's a good thought, but it, right now, it's not an option.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And this is just the screen that goes on about schooling at home in the event we're shut down again. And some of the changes we're going to be making to schooling at home, which is again, 100% of the kids receiving instruction digitally, similar to the spring, but we're hoping to do a better job of it. All right, so during the the in-person, as well as the, for the students that choose not to attend not to attend in person, we are continuing to serve meals. We're obviously going to make sure our kids are fed, all breakfasts.
Excuse me, Mark, can you have your hand up? Go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you, Lynn. I just had one question. Have we already started making some inroads or discussions with the bus company as to how they're going to fit into all these schemes?
Yeah, just hang on, because I have a couple of slides about transportation. I've had a few meetings and phone calls and emails, absolutely. All right, so grab and go breakfast. Again, the bus company, one of the things that we've talked about is we can't allow large groups of students indoors, so we can't have everyone coming in the same way they normally come in. We have to be very, have a very safe entry. So the buses are actually going to be dropping kids off in multiple locations around the campus, and we're setting up grab and go stations. So the kids walk in, grab their breakfast, and go to their classrooms. We can only use the cafeterias minimally, because we can't have more than so many kids together in a space. So maybe one classroom could eat, or if it's a larger cafeteria, maybe two. But the students are going to eat predominantly in their classrooms. Again, it's that cohort model, keeps them together. In the serving areas for lunch, they are going to pick up their own lunches. There's some areas where we're going to be adding Plexiglas shields, assuming we can get our hands on them. That's a whole nother discussion, because they're being used all over the country, and it's not something that's easy to come by right now. If the kids aren't moving their, taking their lunches from the cafeteria to their classrooms, the lunchrooms will have tray covers for safety and obviously to avoid spilling. We're working on getting everyone a lanyard with a barcode, so that they can swipe their lunch code instead of touching the keypad, because then that would require us to disinfect everything. And we have pretty strict cleaning and sanitation protocols that we've talked with facilities and food services about. Again, highly controlled traffic patterns and movement in and around the cafeteria. At the same time that we're working to safely feed everyone in school, food services also has to make sure anyone who opts not to come to school is also fed. So we're working on that whole piece. It's a little bit of a nightmare, but we know kid, the community has to eat. So we have to figure out the details, but that is in the plan. There's an expectation we feed everyone simultaneously. More to come on that. We haven't ironed it all out. And again, it really depends on how many kids show up in person and how many decide to stay home. So we are going to need the parents to, to weigh in for us.
Dr. Youngberg, there was a question in the chat box about the younger, some of the, I think it was pre-K or kindergarten eating family style. The question was, would they have to stop doing that?
Aleke and Eric are working on all the pieces of that and how we're going to handle that. They have slightly different guidelines, because they're the Office of Early Childhood than the K to 12s. I don't know if I can definitely, definitely answer. I don't know, is Aleke on this call? She may be able to jump in, but there's been multiple conversations about family-style eating.
Dr. Youngberg, I'm here, I can answer that.
Oh, Eric, there he is.
So Aleke and I have discussed that topic, and what we have come up with is they will not eat family-style. The classroom teachers, unlike what we've done in the past, to ensure that there's no family-style eating happening.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, so getting back to Mark's question, we have had multiple conversations with the transportation, with both M&amp;J and East Con Transportation. We are kindly asking any family members, any families in Wyndham who have the ability to transport their students to and from school, are strongly encouraged to do so. We're working really hard to make sure there's specific safety protocols in place, but if you can bring your, your child to and from school, please do. Here are some of the things that are going to happen on the school buses. Again, the visual comes right off the state plan. Masks will be required to ride the bus. We have identified a maximum bus capacity. And one of the issues and one of the expenses that comes out of this is if we split the buses, because we've established a maximum capacity, we will obviously need to run additional buses, which costs money. So we're willing to do that if it helps kids, keep the kids safe. But it's one of the things that is, that has to be considered in reopening schools. We are potentially posting bus monitor positions, although with some of the changes to the school day, we may have them naturally built in, in terms of our non-certified staff members. We would like to have bus monitors, particularly on buses that demonstrate that students aren't being safe, because we want them to be safe. It, it, it helps the entire community if they arrive to school safely. Not only safe in terms of physical, but safe in terms of wearing their mask and not touching one another and doing all the things that are supposed to happen when we're riding the bus in COVID-19. The bus windows will remain open while it's moving, the entire run. Between each bus run, they will sanitize all the seats and all the frequently touched areas. Again, I mentioned already the multiple drop-offs and pickup locations on our campuses. They will be taking daily attendance, so that we know who's on the school buses. We're going to work really hard to maintain AM and PM bus cohorts, so that we know if something does happen, how we can trace who may have been, you know, in contact with a student who ends up with COVID-19. We are going to teach the students how to ride the bus safely and reduce the likelihood of transmission. We're going to have videos that they're going to watch, and we're going to do some in-person training once they get back at school.
Mark, does that, no, do you have questions, though, that you'd like to ask about the bus company, Mark?
Well, that is the basic. I was just, I was looking at it from the financials viewpoint, if we're going to have to start having multiple bus runs for individual schools. If we've, we talked about earlier, where we have a 50-passenger bus that can only take 20 kids, that can require us to do multiple runs and a lot of effect attendance. But it looks like we're still in the development stage of that, but that was my primarily concern.
What we actually learned was really fascinating to me. There's approximately 30 buses that are, that have capacities that they really shouldn't have. So we're going to have to absolutely take care of splitting out those buses. That's assuming that every kid takes the bus and every kid returns to school. That's another thing that you may choose to return to school, but, you know, your parents may be able to drive you to and from school, and you won't be accessing the bus. So we, again, this is going to take us some time to figure out who actually ends up on the bus, and then how do we ensure that their safety if they're there? Some additional safety considerations?
Excuse me, Tracy, I have a question via chat, and it's a general one about the cohort plan. Have there been, has there been any thought to address bullying or personality differences? It will be difficult for some, I imagine, if there aren't opportunities to try and make new or different friends, and sort of like the constraints of being in a, in a cohort.
Absolutely agree. There's going to be some, some significant, you know, hurdles that we're going to have to get over. One of the things that we plan on doing is professional development around how to, how to improve the whole community building piece, how to try to help the students understand that this is your, their cohort, this is their family, that they're going to have to live with them, because there's not going to be the ability to move around so much. So, but it's a, you know, it's a real concern. I, I agree, it's going to be very different.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ilda? Yes, go ahead, Ilda.
My question is, when will parents, what's the deadline for the parents to notify us if they're sending their kids to school or?
It's coming up, it's coming up in the presentation. I, it's August 21st, but it's coming up in one of the next slides. The, I have proposed some adjustments to the school calendar that would do a number of things for us. It would provide us, it would push back the start of the school year for the students till Tuesday, September 1st. It would provide multiple days of professional development. I have run the calendar by our union executive boards. They're aware of it. I've given the board an example. But the changes that I'm proposing would have convocation, which is going to be done virtually. What I'm anticipating for convocation is that all the staff members will report back to their schools, and from their schools in safe groups, you know, safe locations, they will access the convocation message virtually, and we'll have each of our schools logged in somehow, so that they're all listening to the same message at the same time. I, I was, you know, joking, this is my first convocation as a superintendent, and it's totally not what I was planning, not at all. So definitely changes all over the place to make this work. Following convocation on August 24th would then be a series of trainings related to COVID-19 and keeping everyone in the building safe. And then we'd have three days of PD. The 25th, 26th, and 27th would be professional development days, and students still not have not arrived. And then on the 28th, which is that Friday, I would like the opportunity to allow parents a safe and very controlled tour of the building, so that they can see what their students are coming into. And I also would like some kind of opportunity, and I've had this conversation with my leaders, for the pre-K students, the kindergarten students, grade six and grade nine, those are all students that are moving to new buildings and, and new experiences. I'd like them to have some kind of safe orientation opportunity. Obviously, we have all of the safety protocols to have to follow, and it's going to need to be highly controlled and organized, but I think we could do it. And if we want our kids to really come back and feel comfortable, I feel like we have to think about their parents being comfortable, the staff members being comfortable, and the kids being comfortable. So I, that's one of the things I'm proposing, is to, to use the 28th as a day where we can make that happen. And then we would have another professional development on Monday, the 31st. And the reason why I built that in is because if anything comes up, when, if we invite the families and the, and those students that are having their orientation opportunities, if we invite them in on Friday and realize there are things that we haven't considered, which I imagine is going to happen, since we've never done this before, the 31st could be used to make those adjustments and do any final prep before the kids arrive on Tuesday, September 1st. So those are the calendar changes I've, I've proposed. And then once the kids arrive on Tuesday, the 1st, the rest of that week would all be early dismissal days. And that would be to allow the students to get used to all of the new things that we're going through, including wearing masks during the school day, cohorting, all the things that, that have already been listed in the presentation. So we would do a full week of early dismissals, and we've, we've figured it all out. It's still, it still meets our instructional hour requirements, still counts as school days. I hear a little voice. We have, I lost my train of thought, because I heard that, I heard that cute little voice. We, we figured out exactly, given that the State Department of Ed has given us leeway and made the 180-day requirement 177, and told us that we could add additional, up to three additional PD days at the start of the school year in preparation to open for students. I feel like this proposal helps the staff to adjust to what's going on, provides plenty of time for them to get adjusted and prepared, allows families an opportunity to feel the same way, and then gives the students a full, well, four full days of early dismissals to get them ready. And then they go home for the long weekend for Labor Day, and we come back, and we're on, full days of school. So that's, those are the calendar changes, and we'll talk shortly about the school day So here's Ilda to answer your question. By Friday, August 21st, the parents will need to notify the district if their child or children are going to come back to campus in-person school. We're, we're trying to figure out the most efficient way to, to roll this out, trying to figure out if we can do it through Power School, if there's some way we can gather the information digitally in a, in an efficient manner. By no later than August 12th, we'll, we'll be rolling out that, that process. And then we're going to gather this data and be able to plan from it, based on, you know, the numbers we know will be coming to school or not coming to school. Again, going to reiterate to parents, they may be on the call right now, listening, and they'll hopefully be on our town, town hall meeting tomorrow, that if you change your mind, and I know you might, because I have kids of my own, I've gone, I've kind of gone back and forth about what I'm doing with my own children. Right, exactly. I would like the parents to, to give us up to five school days to make that decision to, you know, to come back, so that we can ensure everybody's safety. So more to come on that, for sure.
Can we just take a break here? I just want to ask 860-617-4567 to mute your phone, please. You're, you can hear the background noise, even though it's delightful sounding. It's distracting. If you, if you don't know how to mute your phone, please, thank you, thank you. Also, we have a question via chat about whether the early childhood teachers will be doing home visits, as they usually do each year, Dr. Youngberg.
My guess is the answer to that is they're probably not going to be doing home visits, just from the things that I understand from the guidelines, but I actually have not had that discussion with Aleke, so I can't definitively answer that, but I'm guessing the answer's no. More to come on that. All right, so the last slide is simply just, oops, something's happened here. There we go. Simply going to remind staff members and parents how they can reach me if they have additional questions. And I'm, you know, obviously during our virtual town halls, I'll be answering as many as I possibly can. And then we're going to put out a frequently asked question document and post that on our website, so that people can go to, to get the information if they have the questions. And then, of course, I want to make sure that everyone understands that I'm very appreciative of their time and their consideration and their patience, because this has been an awful lot of work to try to figure out how to safely reopen our schools, and at the same time, provide digital learning to the students that opt not to come. So I, I do truly appreciate everyone's patience. So I, I don't know, Lynn, if you want.
Thank you, I want to open it up to discussion. I just want to say, as the chair, I'm, I'm hyperventilating just reading all this stuff.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't imagine having to think about it 24/7 like you all have. And I know Tracy Lambert said that she wanted to ask some questions or make some comments at the end, and I see you're ready to go, Tracy. Go ahead.
All right, I, I mean, absolutely no disrespect, and I know this was a huge Herculean effort by you and your staff to get three different options together. Everywhere I have gone, the post office, Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, you all know me, I drink lots of Dunkin' Donuts, wherever I've gone, people have asked me, what would you do if it was your child? What is the school district doing? I said, there's this tonight. I've told people there's a town hall tomorrow. I posted stuff on Facebook for people who have asked me on Facebook, but lots of questions keep coming up. What happens if students don't wear their masks? And you can save this for tomorrow night if you need to. Is there a discipline policy? But it shouldn't be a discipline policy. What happens there? How are we handling the costs of face shields, barriers, and masks? I work at Willard's, and we can't get Plexiglas to save our souls right now, so I totally understand what that means. We have all kinds of businesses trying to open, asking us if we can cut Plexiglas, and if we could get it, we could cut it, but we can't get it from our suppliers. So I know that that's a huge concern for us, as well as, you know, local businesses and stuff like that. What is the cost of bathroom upgrades and cleaning supplies, such as the paper towels that are touchless, that kind of stuff? I know there's a cost to buying other accoutrement to, you know, handle those kind of things. What happens if a teacher needs to quarantine?
Okay, so, so do you want me to start trying to answer these? Because I have some answers, and I have some where I'm going to tell you. Right. So the first question about masks is if you follow the state guidelines, they really want us to, to remember that our students have not been in school for the last four months, and that we need to make sure that we're, that we're providing as often as possible the opportunity for them to have in-person instruction, and to take every opportunity to teach them why they should wear the mask, before we actually implement disciplinary actions. My feeling about it, though, is that we, this runs a fine line, in that if you're not wearing your mask, you're, you're making other people in the community unsafe. And since we're going to have two schools operating simultaneously, if you absolutely can't wear your mask and you don't have a medical document that says that that's the case, and it's simply just a student choosing not to follow the directive, the, the, the option would be that you'd, you'd be accessing learning digitally. We haven't written that out in a formal policy, but that is my thinking, that at some point you have to draw the line and say, this is the requirement to be safe, this is what has to happen. So that's my feeling about that. And obviously, it's work that I have to flush out with all of my, my leaders, but that's where I stand. If the mask is required, then we have to maintain, mandate the masks. In terms of the costs, I don't have the specific cost of the things that you mentioned, you know, the bathroom upgrades and such. I can tell you that we gave estimated costs to the State Department of Ed. We're guessing that all the things that have to happen to make this a safe reopening is going to cost us a little over $3 million. We've been promised CARES Act money, but that's only been 1.49 million dollars, and actually, I think it's going to be slightly less, because Betsy DeVos won that case to have the money distributed to private schools. So the 1.49 million, I don't know yet exactly how much it's been reduced, but obviously, that's half of what we think we're going to need. So I completely hear you. That's one of the things the superintendents have brought to the commissioner and the governors. We've said it over and over again, this is a, a extremely costly venture, and our towns don't have the money. The governor keeps coming back and saying he's going to be able to take care of us, we're going to be able to, to make all these things happen safely. But again, we haven't seen any of the CARES Act money yet, but that is half of what we potentially need to make this happen.
And that is one of the issues, I just want to jump in here. And that is one of the issues. I just want to jump in here. That is one of the issues that the unions have been making a lot of noise about, which is you can't send us back to the schools without providing us with what we need for the schools to have the materials and everything they need to be able to try our best to do it as safely as possible. And that's why I said earlier on in the discussion today, even though the state has taken away our ability to make a self-determination about how we want to deal with it at the local level by requiring us to put out these three different options, we still do have the option to advocate. And I think particularly districts like ours that are operating with less money than we need to already to ask us to come up with $3 million in additional funding. And even if the CARES Act money comes in, it's not going to be enough. So that's a big issue that the board needs to discuss, I think.
In my survey.
The other thing that was just said to me, in answer to you, Tracy Lambert, is that, isn't it ironic that we're having discussions remotely via Zoom about whether or not we can open the schools in September safely?
So that actually, that question.
Says a lot right there.
That question came on social media, and we answered it today. We actually, we can't have in-gathering meetings right now. We can't have more than 25 people indoors based on the governor's orders. So if we had this meeting, only 25 people could be part, and I think 70, we were up to 70, so we wouldn't be able to actually do it in person based on the current structures that are out there. So yeah, you can see why there's there's lots of contradictions going on and why people are struggling. Any more questions for me, Trace?
Oh, yeah, I have more.
Oh, great.
And they just texted me like, this meeting is crazy. And I'm like, you're watching my Board of Ed meeting? And they're having an in-person Board of Ed meeting that's being livestreamed, and the people are sitting six feet apart, and the camera has to keep panning back and forth while they're talking about putting 20 students in a classroom with a teacher for the fall. And it just seems completely unreasonable to me. And I honestly can't tell you right now if Andrew was going to be a senior this fall, if I would allow him to go to school or not. And I've worked retail, Andrew's worked retail, we both work at Willard's, he works in the yard, I work inside. I have to wear a mask all day, but I'm telling you, it gets hot, these glasses fog up when I have to read little numbers. We take them off when there's nobody in the store and put them back on as soon as somebody comes to the door. And I don't understand how in a hot classroom, kids are going to be able to handle this. Never mind, there are teachers who have to set an example of some sort. And how teachers are going to be able to protect themselves if they can teach without masks on. My my phone is literally blowing up. I keep looking at it as I'm talking to you guys, because people are texting me a myriad of different questions. What happens if teachers need to quarantine? Do they need to use their sick time? Does the district write it off? How are we paying for extra subs?
So there is a series of, and I know Stephanie's on the call, she can probably jump in, but we have a memo that's gone out to the staff members that explains the different options, what happens in the event you get sick, or what happens in the event you choose not to return to work. And there's a series of, it's all part of either FMLA, the new Corona, Family Corona's Act, or American with Disabilities Act. But I don't know if Stephanie, I saw your face on, there's so many people on the public.
She's here.
There she is, there she is. So Stephanie, I don't know if you have anything to add around what staff members do if they get sick?
I have a question.
Well, let's let Stephanie Garrett, please answer the question, Jaime, and then we'll call on you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Stephanie.
It's basically exactly what Tracy said, is that we will follow all of the federal guidelines for them. And if they have, we have people already who have expressed concerns, and we let them know, you know, we're going to let them know what their options are when they make the request. And then just go from there with next steps, because things are changing. We don't, we don't know because the whole, you know, the federal things are either running out, or if it's not extended, we, it'll all be by ear or based on what the federal guidelines are.
Thanks, Steph.
Tracy, do you, just one more question, and then I'm going to move on to another board member, if possible.
Sure. And then can you come back to me, maybe?
Yes.
Um, grading. How is grading going to work? Because I had a senior, and he did little to no work, and, you know, finished it up in the last minute and stuff like that, as I'm sure some of his teachers will attest that they had to grade papers at the last minute, because you've never heard me say my children are perfect. Grading, a lot of students got incompletes at the end of the last semester. Some of them did, some of them didn't attend summer school. Grading needs to be more set, and I think hours need to be more set. And I have a letter drafted already to the governor and the Commissioner of Education, saying that employees can't employ their students, especially at the high school level, during the hours of 8 to 3 or something like that. I don't remember exactly what hours I put in, but they have to allow a set number of hours during the school day for students, for students to go to school and show up online. When a lot of the stuff was remote, a lot of it was hand it in when you get it done, let me know when you're done, especially at the high school level, which was my largest experience and my largest feedback from a lot of people. But I've heard from some middle school teachers who said we gave a lot of incompletes that are not going to get done, or will get done much later than they need to be, and it's hard to move on to the next level with two or three incompletes on your transcript, including English.
So part of the schooling at home 2.0, we're creating a manual, and we absolutely hear that feedback loud and clear. Students are going to, and by the way, I have a son who's going to be a senior, and he sounds like he and Andrew would have gotten along really well.
God help you.
They are going, they are going to have to show up for class. It's going to be a much more structured lesson design and schedule. So if they are accessing from from at home, or if we end up in that hybrid, or if we end up fully virtual, it's going to be much more structured than it was in the spring. I mean, we should be have the ability, our goal is at this point, to make sure every household in Wyndham has access to a device and Wi-Fi. So there should be no reason why we're working out of packets and not virtually virtually accessing teachers and students. So we are planning on taking attendance both in-person and virtually. We're working on how to track that through Power School. And we completely agree with that feedback. It needs to be much more structured for our students moving forward.
Totally understand. I ran running in March. I totally get that. And we didn't know how to recreate this animal, you know, right from the beginning. But those are some of the feedback that I've gotten from teachers and parents, like, my kid didn't have to show up online, so what was I going to make him do? Look at a blank screen, you know? So I understand those things. Andrew did the majority of his spring work in about 24 hours, and was just really tired at work the next day. And that's not acceptable as a board member or as a parent, but he's got to learn to float that ship on his own, too.
Jaime, thank you, Tracy. We'll get back to you later. Jaime has a question?
Yes. Yeah, I'm just wondering, how are we to address that letter from the union, teachers? Okay, can we, I mean, are we to disregard that, Dr. Youngberg, members of the board? Because I think there are serious concerns about this. And we just don't know, what are we going to say to to out of luck? I mean, if your government's order?
So I had a meeting yesterday with the executive board of all the unions, and I am, you know, they made me aware. They understand that it's a directive I've been given by the governor and the Commissioner of Education, and they, you know, expressed these concerns to me in that meeting. So I wasn't surprised to see the letter, because they shared, you know, their issues yesterday. I don't exactly know. I mean, I sent you what Cave is suggesting, Lynn. I don't know if you had a chance to read that document, but Cave put out some guidelines that they say this is what a Board of Education member can do around the reopening, the idea of reopening. You know, I, I, as the superintendent, I know that my, that the WFT represents a pretty large chunk of my of my staff, the largest chunk of my staff. And so to to know that they're, you know, concerned about safety is alarming to me, and I I want to do my best to tell them that we're working really hard to meet the guidelines. But I understand their anxiety.
Because I think it goes well beyond just one teacher going into quarantine. Because if one of them goes into quarantine, I mean, that means that many others could fall. So I don't know.
Just way in, Jaime, since you, since you asked, not just Dr. Youngberg, but the rest of the board, and the rest of the board, we can talk about this. As I've said twice already in tonight's discussion, we as a board have an option to maybe advocates on behalf of our district with the state. And that is not disregarding all the work that Dr. Youngberg and the staff are doing to follow the directives that they've been given. But, you know, the the teachers' union and all the staff, other staff, all have reason to be concerned, as do the parents. And I think that it's, it's, we need to decide whether or not we're going to take some action to weigh in with the state about how, what a tough position they're asking us all to be in by requiring us to behave lockstep based on directives that are being given to us from above. But I want to, like, we can have that discussion. I just want to make sure we get through all the questions first. Is there another question you had, Jaime, before?
I just want to say, it was no more intention, you know, to go after the superintendent or say that she's not doing enough. But she asked that, you know, that letter was sent today. And there is something else. I mean, there's a lot of concerns about that.
This letter is actually.
I mentioned it, okay? Nothing against anybody. Actually, I think Dr. Youngberg had done a great job, all the staff, everyone else. But I'm still cannot stop thinking about that letter. Because it's not an issue that just goes away when we have social conditions in one class. It's just something that we need to think about. Because it's, it's not even a latent situation. It's become real. So that was my, I just wanted to express my concern.
Dr. Gomez, if you have a chance to look up online, the CEA, the Connecticut Education Association, they put out their own guidelines for reopening schools yesterday. Our teachers aren't, you know, we're AFT. CEA put out their own guidelines. And you'll see that what our teachers here are saying is very much aligned to what the CEA has put out in their guidelines. And and, you know, they're not, their arguments are not wrong. I'm, we're just, I'm doing what I've been asked to do and trying my best to meet the guidelines.
I certainly understand that, Dr. Youngberg. Okay, we appreciate, I do appreciate what you're doing. I know it's very, very tough.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jaime. I'm going to turn it over to Mark, who has a question or a comment. Mark, you're on. Is he frozen? Mark Doyle, you said you wanted to ask a question? Go ahead.
Prior, prior, thank you, Lynn. Prior to your comment, my my comment I was going to make is that I definitely think the board needs to, through the exec committee or the whole board, draft a letter to the governor with severe questions about this whole plan. It would make sense to me that after tomorrow's town meeting, when we have questions for this, we already have the letter from our staff. After the town meeting, we certainly have questions from the population. We put together a a letter that goes to the governor and goes to Sue Johnson, that outlines, this plan has got a lot of holes in it, as questions that come to Tracy. I mean, my youngest is 34 years old. I still remember I couldn't get him to keep his shoes on when he was five. How are you going to get the, these kindergartners to keep their masks on is beyond my imagination. They're going to chase him around all day. So I really think that we need to take affirmative action in producing that letter and and coming up with some other plan than what looks good.
Okay, we have that on the table. Thank you, Mark. I will come back to that, okay? We'll come back and we'll consider that suggestion. Katina, you have a question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I I agree with Mark that we should write a letter. I I teach at the university level, and we are equally anxious as professors of coming in, and I can understand how it is really anxiety-producing to all the teachers, staff, and the parents about coming in. And rumor has it that that there's a possibility of teachers being penalized or reprimanded if they speak up what they are feeling. And I would like to ask the question directly if anybody, if there's going to be any disciplinary action, which I suspect is not, and I, but I would like to put it to rest.
Disciplinary action?
If if they don't, if they don't want to come back to school, or if they talk against coming back to school. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, but.
Right. They're they're all adults, they're all professionals, they have the right to express their opinions about pretty much anything. And this is something that obviously would, you know, could impact their health and safety and the health and safety of their families. They're not going to hear from me not to speak up. But I will tell you that if they choose not to come back to work, we've got to have them meet with our HR department, because we need to figure out what supports could technically, they could qualify for, and how that's going to impact them if they don't come back to work. They've got to make an appointment with our HR director to go through how that's going to happen. It's not going to be like the spring where everyone is home and they automatically get paid. That's not going to be the case. So they have to make an appointment with the with the HR department to figure out what their decision means for them and their family. So but I, I, anytime that people have a chance to to speak up, you're not ever going to hear me say, no, that's not the way to go. Particularly if it's advocating for kids, that's just not going to happen. And I don't know, I don't know where the rumor came from, but we should probably kill it now, because it's just not true.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else on the board who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Paula, and then Tracy.
Inasmuch as the requirement is going to be for face masks, what kind of commitment are we going to get from the state that that will be available to us? I mean, working in the medical field, we already have difficulty acquiring the numbers that we need. Clock masks need to be washed. Disposable masks are usually only good for a week. Are we going to have a guarantee from the state that that material is going to be available to us?
So I I don't know if there's going to be a guarantee. I can tell you that I've been working with the town to try to make sure that we have options. We do have some already stored and ready to go to start the school year. We have to make purchases. That's also something that has to happen. We're obviously going to ask the kids to come with their own, but we know that that not everyone is going to come with their own, like any other school supply we would be requiring. So we have to have the the ability to give masks out where they're not, where they don't show up with one. So I don't know about a guarantee from the state. The state is working to try to find some way to do mass orders. So because multiple districts have the same exact concerns, but I don't, I haven't seen a guarantee it's going to happen yet. And I think as the cases around this country, we know that that's where the supplies are going.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Next person who had their hand up on the board was Tracy Lambert. And I'm sorry if I've gotten up a couple of times. I have a dog that keeps wanting to walk in and out of the room, and I'm trying to keep the door shut. So not, not being rude. Thanks. Go ahead, Tracy.
I already answered my questions. Are there any other board members that want to go first with their initial questions? Okay. Um, is the state helping us, or do they have any opportunity to mass purchase masks?
They are, they are trying, they are trying to make that happen. I know we've signed up to be part of a big consortium that's supposed to make a bulk order, but I haven't heard anything more about it since we put our name in to be included in that.
Right. Well, that's just a way to save money and access supplies that are difficult to access otherwise. All research says that high school students do better if they start later. Is there the opportunity in this whole COVID busing mess to start our high school students later, so that way they're more able to learn for the shortened amount of time that they might be in a classroom?
So in my proposed changes to the school day, I had not considered changing the high school schedule start time. And that really, one of the biggest reasons why high schools don't start later is because of their activities and their sports. And we have, don't yet have a decision about whether those are happening in the fall. So I don't think we can make adjustments to the high school schedule until we have that information. And I don't think that's something you do lightly, anyway. That that requires major changes and communication and making sure that the community's on board, because those, you know, significant changes. I agree, I have a senior, going to be a senior, who doesn't want to get up in the morning, but is awake at 3:00 AM. So I know that they're on different schedules entirely, but that's not, that's not something I'm proposing to do right now.
Right. I don't think a lot of my teacher friends would appreciate being up at 3:00 AM to teach students, but maybe something a bit later is something we should consider in the long run. Especially if CIA determines that they're not having sports. I'd rather have a quality of time of day where they're more able to learn around 9:00 or, which is still early for some people. But, you know, around 9:00 or something, than getting them up at 7:00 to be in a classroom where they're not going to learn, or they're just not going to log on, or they're not going to show up. So just something food for thought. Are we prepared at any of our buildings for additional parent pickup?
So in terms of, you mean, in terms of cars picking up students?
Where the parents don't want them to take the bus.
We've had the conversation with all the principals about how it's likely that less kids will be riding the bus, and that we may actually have to make adjustments to when we dismiss those being picked up by cars and when we dismiss those being picked up by buses, like. Like, one of the schools that's come up is really troublesome, they're, the way it's situated is North Wyndham Elementary School has a horrible traffic pattern around the building. So Liz and I have had conversations, I may need to let her students being picked up by their parents leave 15 minutes before the buses are dismissed, just to make that whole area safe, because we do anticipate more kids being dropped off. So we're gonna be communicating that with each of the specific schools, but it's definitely something that's come up in our conversations with principals.
Okay, I have two more, or one more. Is there something going out to parents in the near future about starting to prepare their students for wearing masks during the day? I've seen stuff, you know, memes on Facebook, like, start putting those masks on your kids now and make them seem like a good idea, and it's fun and it's okay. That way they're ready for it come fall, because I don't think all the duct tape in the world, while that's not really a solution, but I don't think all the duct tape in the world will really keep these masks on the kids if they decide they're hot, or they're itchy, or they don't wanna wear it, or it fell in the toilet, or whatever else might possibly happen. And I know those are all things that early childhood educators especially have to deal with, but I think there'll be a decent number of high school students who are belligerent about having to wear it, too.
So there actually is gonna be a letter, I purposely waited to have this meeting because I'm hoping I can report out on some of the changes if they get approved. There is gonna be a letter going out to families and staff members, and we are gonna make some recommendations about how to start using the time we have between now and the opening of school to help get kids on board for some of the safety protocols, washing their hands properly, getting used to the masks, those kinds of things. The same kind of things that you would normally do when you, when you tell parents of kindergarten kids to start working with them to be more independent before they come to school, let them open their own milk, let them, you know, do their own, only now we have a layer of safety protocols. Let them try to do this at home before they get to us. So, I, we are planning on sending out the letter at the end of this week, Monday the latest.
I really appreciate your comments and your feedback, and I hope it prepares you for tomorrow night. These are just some of the concerns, and my phone is still blinging over here next to me. These are just concerns that parents and staff have communicated to me. If I get more, I'll send them to you. But I really do appreciate you answering my questions, Trace. Thank you.
No problem, you're welcome. I see Lynn, Lynn, you're muted.
I wanna go back to Mark's suggestion about the Board of Ed drafting a letter raising our concerns about the ability to meet the requirements the state is giving us with the resources that we have, and our concern about, you know, just how we're gonna pull this off. And, of course, we can incorporate things that we're hearing from the parent surveys and the staff surveys, and we can also incorporate what we hear at our town, at the town hall meeting. Do people on the board think that's a good idea to craft this letter, send it to the governor and to our legislators? Give me a thumbs up if, if that's a good idea. One, two, three, four. Tracy, did you give me a thumbs up? Okay, how about Jaime or Mary? I can't see you guys. Mary gave me a thumbs up, I see. She's on the next screen. Jaime?
Me, too.
Okay, so, who would like to work with me on that letter? I, I don't need a whole team, but, okay, Tracy and Katina? Okay. Mark? Okay. So, what I'm gonna ask is that, which one of you would like to take a crack at crafting the letter? Or does the three of you wanna get together and craft the letter?
I assume it's, I assume it's easier for one person to try and draft the initial letter-
That's what I think.
... and have it edited, edited and added to.
Okay.
I don't mind starting the letter, Katina or-
You wanna start the letter, Mark? And share it with Katina? Why don't you start the letter, Mark? Share it with Katina and Tracy, and then you guys share it with the full board.
Sure. You guys can, you're welcome to come to my house, or we can meet somewhere outside to, to work on that.
Okay, well, why don't the three of you get in touch with each other at the end of this meeting and figure out how you're gonna do that, okay? And, and-
Yeah. Another letter can be saved, and then we can, you know, make-
Yeah, well, everybody will see the letter before-
More documents, we can include comments.
Yeah, yeah. So, and Tracy Youngberg, we're not undermining your efforts, I hope you don't think that. We're just, we're just, we're just advocating with the state, because that's all we can do, really.
No, I absolutely do not think that you're undermining at all. It's like advocacy is the way the whole thing's supposed to work, I totally get it.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, that's one thing that we can also say to the unions, that, you know, as they, if they, if we get more letters, like the one we got from the Wyndham Federation of Teachers today, we can say that, you know, we're also writing our own letter with these concerns, so. Okay, thank you. Now, you know, we're not taking action on anything tonight, folks, regarding this plan, except the action items around the, around the school calendar.
And, and potentially changes to the school day.
Changes in the length of the day. And that's not under here as an action item, so do we need to have a-
You're right, it just says school calendar.
Yeah, so can I get a motion to consider action on the changing the length of the school day? Tracy? Lambert, you're making that motion?
I make the motion to adjust the school day according to the-
Well, that's gonna be, put it on the action-
Oh, I make a motion to put on the agenda to adjust the school day.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tracy Lambert, seconded by Katina. I need a roll call. Janet, please.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Jaime, you vote yes on adding this to the action? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
As Ms. Dunick joined us. Thank you.
Okay, so, if there's not anything more, we're gonna move on to action items. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us. I know we're getting up close to nine, it's gonna be a long meeting tonight. So we're on to action items, and the first action item is recommended appointment of a medical advisor. And I know that I saw Dr. O on the call, but he may have gotten tired of waiting.
No, he's still on the call.
Oh, there he is, okay.
I'm here.
Okay. So, um, would somebody like to make a motion to appoint a medical advisor, Dr. O? Dr. Joseph O?
I will do it.
Second.
I recommend that the board, I make a motion that the board, the Wyndham Board of Ed, approve Dr. Joseph O as the new district medical advisor.
Okay, Elda made the motion, it was seconded by Mark, I believe. Is there any discussion? There was considerable information in our packet supporting this. And, and Dr. O, I'll call on you in a second, okay? Are there any, any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Okay, I will take a vote on the motion, and then assuming it gets approved, Dr. O, I'm gonna ask you to say a few words, okay?
Sure.
Okay, so, roll call, Janet?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved? Congratulations, Dr. O. Whoa, what a time to come in. Is there anything you'd like to say by way of introduction?
I don't know if Tara Webb is on the call, but I just wanted to let her know my appreciation for, my understanding is that the Tara and some of the other nurses, just knowing me from phone calls from generations, had suggested or nominated that, that I accept this job, and I'm looking forward to it, and it was nice to meet you all, finally. And, you know, I've, I've been with generations now, a year, over a year, and of course, you know, all my, most of my patients are, go to Wyndham Public Schools. And so, I'm happy to be able to provide care to them in, in another way.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, and, and there has been a request from a couple of board members, if we could get a CV from you, Dr. O, that would be terrific.
Yes. I sent one to Miguel Pabon, or should I send it to somewhere, somewhere else?
Sure, if Miguel has it, he can give it to Dr. Youngberg's office.
Miguel's boarding it.
It's in the packet.
No, it wasn't in my packet.
No? I thought it's not in the packet, but I do have it, I can share that.
Okay, thank you very much, Miguel. And, and welcome aboard, Dr. O.
Thank you very much. Lynn, if I, I wanted to share something, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure, go right ahead.
So, I also wanted to thank Dr. O, but before I, I talk about that, I wanted to also thank Kristen Gooden, who started off by just honoring Dr. Kelly, who really was our medical advisor for many years than I can count, more than I've been here. And a lot of you know him, and so I wanted to just share her sentiments, her kind words, and wishing Dr. Kelly all the best of his retirement. This has been a, a long process for us, and I wanted to say thank you to Dr. O. He, he came highly recommended from our nurse, our nurses who work with him, and so we are happy to welcome him on board. He has been nothing but a professional, patient in this process, as we were learning all of the ins and outs of getting the communication to him. And this is actually the first time we meet, because again, we're, during this COVID pandemic, we've been doing all our calls, I mean, you know, communication through phone calls and texting, but he's been extremely responsive, and I think it's a good indication of someone who really cares about our community. And again, I wanna extend a welcome to him, and thank you to the board for appointing him, so that we can move forward with, with his advice. So, again, thank you so much, and welcome, Dr. O. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And, and, you know, it has been reminded, we did get the CV and another, like, it came in two different ways. I mean, we got the packet and drips and drops, but we'll make sure everybody gets it again, just in case, it doesn't hurt to send it electronically one more time. So, um, uh, next item is recommended approval of the revised school calendar. Dr. Youngberg asked us to consider changing the school calendar, so that the first day of school would open would be Tuesday.
Tuesday, September 1st for the students, and August 24th for the staff members.
Almost. Second.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion?
I'd like to make sure it gets adequately communicated to the parents and community at large when school's going to start.
Absolutely. In the letter that's going out Friday or Monday the latest, they will have a copy of the newly updated calendar, and, you know, the rationale as to why we made the changes and how we're gonna use that time, absolutely.
Thank you. It's just a concern, because people have had misinformation out, out there about the first day is, before Labor Day, after Labor Day, when their kids have to show up, all that kinda stuff. So I just wanna make sure it's adequately communicated.
Okay, we'll do a roll.
Ms. Hyde.
Um, so, I'm so sorry, I got distracted by the chat. I wanted to make sure I was paying attention to what was going on, in case it was pertinent to this discussion. Is there any further discussion on the school calendar change? Hearing none. Janet, would you do a roll call?
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
It was suggested that we send a letter to Dr. Kelly, thanking him on behalf of, behalf of the district, and so, can, can we work with the staff in central office to figure out a way to make that happen, please?
Absolutely.
Miguel, would you work, would you work, work on that?
Absolutely, I'd be happy.
If it's okay with your boss?
It's totally okay. We like to say thank you and show gratitude, that's one of our things here.
Okay.
Work on it together.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so, next item is approval of revisions to the-
And the nurse group, the nurse-
I'm sorry, did somebody say something? I missed it.
I think they were saying something about including the nurses, and absolutely-
Including the nurses, oh, yeah, absolutely.
We will do that, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, we were, Miguel, we were just gonna say that the nursing group has-
Yes, well, no, the nurse, yeah, the nurses, the nurses group, yeah.
Is sending something out this week, so thank you for his service.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Okay. I'm just making notes of all this. So next item is recommended approval of revisions to the following board policies. One is concerning the student health services policy, another, the medication administration policy, sunscreen policy, students with special healthcare needs policy, and health assessments and immunizations policy. And do we wanna take that in one full motion, policy?
I move that the Board of Education approved the policies as a block.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Katina, seconded by whom?
Tracy.
Tracy.
Or Marcus.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? This is, you know, we had a chance to review this already, there's been no proposed changes from what was presented to us last month.
Lynn?
Paula, go ahead.
I just have a question regarding COVID. Are there any changes that need to be made, or things added as a result of the coronavirus, for instance, to the chronic diseases, or anything relative to vaccinations, which I know we don't have, but?
Good question. Anybody on staff able to answer that?
Tara Webb, can you hear me? Or Suzanne, one of the two?
Tara Webb, here tonight, we-
Tara Webb, can you hear me? Suzanne?
Yep, Tara Webb's here as well. We will be looking at some COVID suspension criteria in the near future with the policy committee.
We're having a real tough time here.
I'm having a real tough time here.
If I may jump in, Suzanne, because you're, you're a bit garbled. Some of the exclusion criteria will probably be updated, just because of the CDC guidelines will be changing in terms of exclusion criteria. But as, you know, as we move forward and get a little bit more of a firm idea of, of what all that will be, we'll, we'll be, we can bring it up to the policy committee.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does that help you, Paula? Okay. Okay, hearing none or seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is action to approve the recommended budget transfers as put forth by the Finance and Audit Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Tracy Lambert. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those, I mean, Janet, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call. Thanks.
Ms. Aide.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Gulucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passed. Now we have two more additional action items on the agenda that we added on, you know, during the course of this meeting. The next one is, um, motion regarding use of the 2019-2020 budget surplus of roughly $600,000 to be allocated to the Health Insurance Fund. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mrs. Katina, so moved.
Katina's making the motion to do so.
Second.
Seconded by Tracy Lambert. Is there any discussion on this? As we discussed at the Finance and Audit Committee, this is going to put us in a, in a, in a good position for the upcoming year. So. I hope we do it. Yes, Mark?
I'm just wondering, just came to my thought now, rather than put in the actual number of 600,000, we should just put in any surplus from this.
Right.
Year's budget or any, something that's a little more open-ended. So we're not, is that needed? I don't know if that should be required or not.
Right. That's a, do the people who put the motion on the floor accept the friendly amendment to be the surplus amount?
Absolutely.
Surplus amount?
Absolutely.
Okay, they both said yes. And that's a good catch, Mark. Thank you very much. Because, you know, when everything's trued up in the next month, it may be a little different than 600,000. So, okay, any further discussion? So all those in favor of the motion? Oh, now I keep on having to do roll call votes. Janet?
Ms. Aide.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Gulucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert. Lambert, I'm sorry, do you hear?
She said aye, but she did have her mute on.
And Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the final action item for today is a motion to adjust the school day as proposed by Dr. Youngberg in her presentation to us earlier on the agenda.
You need to see that again, to see the proposal again, or?
Would people like to see the proposal?
It's in our packet. We should be able to see it there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody want to make the motion?
So moved, Paula.
Paula made the motion. Okay.
Tracy.
Tracy's quick on the second being today.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Aide.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Gulucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen. Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Thank you, everybody. Now, we were going to, we're going to go into a non-meeting for discussion concerning the proposed cafeteria contract. But before we do that, I'm wondering, given the fact that we have, still have like 67 people on this call, could we, would the board possibly allow us to open a public comment now? And then we just don't do it after we have our non-meeting? Does that make sense?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, give me a thumbs up if that's okay with you. Yeah, okay, so we're going to do that because I really hate to have people who are on this wait around for us to have our non-meeting. So is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Ms. Brunner.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Youngberg for the massive effort you had to have put into that packet for the state. You know, it must have taken a lot of your summertime and summer evenings away. Thank you also of the Board of Education for trying to advocate for our district. It was calming to hear the discussion and concerns. I can tell you now that as a teacher, we are worried, we are afraid for ourselves and our families, as well as the families and the children, of the children that we are going to be teaching. I do have, my biggest concern, I would like to get at, and I'll make this fast, is 23% of the children in Florida, schoolchildren in Florida, have tested positive for having COVID with no symptoms. My concern is that our state is not having children tested prior to opening the school doors. If that could happen, we would all of a sudden know what model we had to use. Would we, would we be able to use the full 100% in? Would we be able to use a hybrid? Would we be forced to go into distant learning? I don't know if that's something that we can suggest to the governor. I don't know all that political stuff. And I don't know all the expense behind that. But it just seems to me a common sense move to make before we open up our school doors to a bunch of silent carriers that we know how many children we may be infecting. A comment I would like to make also with regards to that is we have several classrooms that are going to have 20-plus children. And four feet apart is really good for adults who keep their masks on, but it's really not viable for kids. I have seen already kids out in the public. They're using them as slingshots at each other. I've actually had, seen a child take the, her mask off to cough, if that makes any sense. These are kids. They are not going to be following our protocols right off the, at any given point. We also have some rascals who'll be coughing on each other just because it's going to be funny. And then all the rest of the class is going to go, ew! And they're going to have a blast seeing that reaction over their activity. These are real concerns for spreading the disease. I went into my room the other day to get some things moved around because I have to move my room for numbers. It was hot. We were not allowed, did not, did not have the fans on because our circuit breakers were off for some repair, I'm sure. I actually had heat exhaustion after three hours of being in there. I had a wet mask from perspiration. I had water dripping behind me as I walked across my classroom due to my perspiration. I was in a daze coming home, slept for three hours, got up, had dinner, and slept the rest of the night. I was exhausted after three hours. So the shortened day makes a lot of sense to me. But again, I didn't have to have a mask on. And we have no way of keeping those rooms cool if we don't have some kind of ventilation system that moves air in and out. This is going to be another complication, as well as it's going to be incubating. Any kid who takes off their mask to cough and whatnot, it can be incubating that disease. Something else that is a big concern as an adult would be in that room. And I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Just unmute yourself and identify yourself. Okay, well, thank you very much. Yes?
Tracy. I just want people to know that if I had a child right now attending high school, I'm not sure what I would do as a parent. And I mirror Tracy Youngberg's sentiments about not knowing what to do and what is best. I asked the question earlier to you and Tracy about what happens if the board votes to not have in-person schooling this fall? And what happens if we, you know, vote to do it virtually? And that's out of our hands. And I don't want anybody in the public to think that the Board of Ed is voting to keep students in school. I honestly don't know what the end of August will bring for our numbers and where we are and what the governor will decide. But as a parent, right now, if you ask me, I honestly couldn't tell you what I would decide to do if one of my children was in the high school right now. So I don't want anybody to think that the Board of Ed is rubber stamping having students in the building or not having students in the building or, you know, not mask, mask, whatever that means. But we are all concerned about what's going on and how it's going to affect our children and our staff. Some of the staff I have worked with for years, some I'm really good friends with, some have taught my children and I have the ultimate respect for them, even if we don't connect on a personal level, because they've been great people. And teaching my children hasn't always been easy. Teaching any children isn't easy. What happens if they sneeze on each other's mask? What happens if they take each other's mask? What happens if it drops in the toilet? All of these questions are floating around out there. And I don't think that any of us takes it lightly that students are going to be in a classroom this fall. I understand that there's a need for it. And I hope that the governor weighs the need for it with economic equality and what's right for students and staff as opposed to what's right for parents who need to get back to their jobs and stuff like that. I totally respect people who work. Andrew and I have worked, all of my family has worked through this entire COVID thing. We've taken tests. We've been careful. We've worn our masks and washed our hands and hand sanitized and stuff like that. But it still doesn't mean that we're safe and it still doesn't mean that we're guaranteed to be okay. So it's not a rubber stamp to give an okay to students being in the classroom or being at home or online learning or not. We have to do what's best right now, what we, with what we know. And I'm sure Dr. Youngberg will keep us appraised of what's going on, what the recent recommendations are. I have no doubt of that because she's been fabulous through the whole conversation. But I just want to let everybody know that it's not an easy decision. It's not a good decision. It's the best we have to deal with right now.
Thank you. Any other public comment before we move on? Murphy?
Okay, I'm 78 years old. And at my age, this is a serious consideration. My body's not what it was when I was younger and it sends me some signals. I'm not really sure exactly what of my potential underlying conditions might have an effect, and I don't want to find out. But I'm also a statistician. And so the real question here is, what are the odds? You know, how, how safe or unsafe am I? So far, my wife and I are being very careful and we hardly ever go anywhere. We have our food delivered. And we don't stick our nose out anymore than we absolutely have to. But on the other hand, I'm certainly glad that we don't live in Florida, Texas, Arizona, or California because Wyndham is actually fairly safe. And Scotland and Canaan and Connecticut have never had a case this entire pandemic. And I kind of wonder what their school boards are thinking with all these precautions. I certainly hope they can advocate with the state for some flexibility based on local conditions because it's certainly expensive to take precautions based on a situation in Hartford or New Haven that doesn't exist in Wyndham, Willimantic, or Wyndham County. You really need to decide what you're going to do based on the risk of where you are. I tend to agree with the idea that it would be really nice if everybody could be tested. But we're talking about a school year. The fact that everybody might start school with a negative test doesn't mean that they would all have a negative test two weeks later, right? I mean, and we don't unfortunately have the capacity to test people, you know, weekly or daily or whatever. But we do have to recognize that very few people in this community are getting sick at all. So I would hope that, and I wonder if the state is going to update some of their requirements based on what the CDC and others are saying about the latest research. For example, it turns out that the likelihood of being infected by touching a surface is really, really small. And I kind of wonder if some of the money and effort that we're paying about disinfecting right and left all of the time is, would be better spent worrying about how we're going to do ventilation filtration when the weather gets cold and we're going to close the windows. I mean, Dr. Youngberg talked about fans and whatnot and exhaust cans and otherwise. Once it gets cold, we're depending on the interior filter ventilation or cooling and heating systems in those school buildings, all of which are quite old. And there are possible updates to air filtration by putting in newer, modern filters. There's a considerable expense to doing that, probably. I kind of wonder if come November, we're really going to be filtering the air adequately, given what we know about the likelihood of air transmission versus touching things. The other thought is.
Murphy, Murphy, you got to start wrapping it up.
Okay, well, one of the benefits of opening up is I can, I'm concerned about parents who want to work. And if you have a school system where the kids are in school some of the time and not in school some of the time, that really is going to be difficult on parents who have to work. If, if you had a structure where the younger kids, the K-5s, were in a building, those are the ones that need parental supervision. The older students were really more likely to transmit less supervision. I think you should advocate for a system that lets you be more supportive of the needs of parents as well as of the needs of students and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Murphy. Anybody else want to speak during public comment? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to go into a non-meeting for the discussion concerning the proposed cafeteria contract. Somebody on the board want to make that motion?
So moved. Mrs. Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. So Janet, would you call a vote on the motion?
Ms. Aide.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Gulucci.
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert. Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go into this non-meeting, which means everybody except board members and Dr. Youngberg. I don't know who from the, from the staff is staying on.
Stephanie Garrett, for sure.
Okay. So everybody else.
Eric.
Eric, if he's still on.
And Eric. Okay, Eric, Stephanie, Dr. Youngberg, and the board. So everybody else, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. I'm just trying to see who's. E. Crespo? Who's E. Crespo? Okay, who's Eric? Where are you? Your iPhone 2 and something else?
Here, I just, my video is not, is working on my phone, but I'm here.
Okay, so who's Samsung SM?
I'm me.
That is, I'm Cindy Verno. I'm the union rep for the cafeteria.
Okay, okay, great. And who is 860423? Is that Mary? 4233670?
Yes, yes, that's me.
Okay, so Mary, yeah, because it's, sometimes people have the two screens.
And Lynn, Janet is, Janet's not actually being on, but her profile is because we're afraid if we shut her down, we're all going to get
Right. Well, I'll go away. Right. So.
Is this supposed to be recorded?
It is being recorded. Oh, good question. It's a non-meeting. Your non-meeting might be recorded.
So we have to stop recording.
You can do that.
I don't know that, I don't know that the cafeteria person is supposed to be here in a non-meeting.
Right, the union rep is not supposed to be here.
Jessica just told me me and Eric.
Okay, so then Cindy, you have to log off.
Cindy, you have to log off and then, and then log back on if somebody